I'd like to call the February fourteenth, Valentine's Day 2017, our school board regular meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Connolly.
Here.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Hyrens.
Here.
Mr. McOscar. Madam Chair, you have a call.
All right, if everybody would rise for a moment of silence and then, Mr. Hyrens, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
Motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or removal of items? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously and the agenda has been approved. Our first order of business, Ms. Egan, will you help us in our proclamation?
Sure, I just put a piece of gum on my mouth. Sorry. Cut me off guard here.
This so shows that you can do.
Yes.
That's right.
Multitasking. Proclamation to designate February sixth through tenth, 2017, as National School Counseling Week. Whereas, school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential; and whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development; and whereas, school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children; and whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves; and whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society; and whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the school board on this fourteenth day of February 2017 that the school board hereby designates National School Counseling Week. And I want to say thank you to all our counselors.
Do we have any of our counselors this evening in the audience? If so, please stand if you are here. If not, I'd like to just echo Ms. Egan's, we have an amazing counselors and especially those, all of them, but I know those who are involved in our flight team as well have done invaluable service in our schools. We hate to call on them, but we have the best when we have to call on them in that emergency. So, moving on. Is that Dr. Benson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to read our resolution this evening to recognize February 2017 as School Board Appreciation Month. Whereas, the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual strength of our Commonwealth is built; and whereas, local school boards devote themselves to providing a high-quality education for all students in the Commonwealth; and whereas, the leadership of our school boards affects the development and future of our children and ensures that students are prepared to compete in local, state, national, and global economies; and whereas, locally elected and appointed school board members play an important role in representative democracy as the decisions of local school boards directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools; and whereas, school board members work with parents, businesses, educational professionals, and other community members to create and sustain an educational vision for our students; and whereas, the Commonwealth of Virginia is proud of our educational system and appreciates the efforts of local school board members to make the Virginia public school system a great place in which to educate our youth; and whereas, we can take this opportunity to thank Virginia's school board members for their leadership and support of a public school system from which the entire Commonwealth benefits. Be it finally resolved, Stafford County recognizes February 2017 as School Board Appreciation Month and encourages local school divisions and community leaders to appropriately recognize our state's dedicated school board members adopted by the Stafford County School Board this fourteenth day of February 2017. So, and just a personal thank you, you know, the relationship between a board and superintendent and trying to advocate and, you know, do the best we can for the students in our community is really critical to being successful. And I certainly feel supported by this board and I'm hopeful that you all feel, you know, in a like manner because we've done some great things and even greater things on the horizon. So, thank you. And we do have some certificates to pass out. We're going to do this on an individual basis and we have something else to share that might take up a little bit of space on your desk area.
Okay. Formal.
It's a formal presentation.
Oh, gosh, the Virginia School Board certificate.
I'm thinking now that we sit right next to each other, we should be a hug.
Yeah. Okay, that's not going to happen again.
It'll live on in infamy here because we got it on video.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much. That was very nice of you.
Ms. Decatur.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
No, trying to keep us on track. Very nice. Very nice.
Thank you. Oh, no, I got one. Can't get too much stuff.
It's Mr. Hyrens. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very nice, very nice.
Well, I'm sure I can say on behalf of the board, thank you all for this recognition. I know for all of us, it's an honor and privilege to serve our community and I certainly appreciate that. Our next item goes right along with that. The way that a good school board, a school board looks really good is if they have great support. We certainly have done that in our hiring of Dr. Benson, but we also have another great person that we have hired is our wonderful, affectionately known as Super Clerk, Ms. Euring, and it is also our school clerk appreciation week. And I will let Mr. Hyrens take it away.
Yes, thank you. That last one I absolutely hate, this one I absolutely love. Proclamation to recognize February twentieth through twenty-fourth, 2017, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week and recognize Roberta Euring for her invaluable service as clerk of the Stafford County School Board. Whereas, school board clerks in each locality throughout our Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities; and whereas, school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of meetings and proceedings of the school board and a record of all official acts; and whereas, school board clerks perform such duties in connection with school business of his or her county or city as may be required by the school board; and whereas, school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents and employees on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and we especially should thank you for that this week. Whereas, school board clerks in performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings; and whereas, school board clerks join with school boards to help ensure that students achieve to their highest potential; and whereas, school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents; and the Virginia School Board Association's Board of Directors does hereby recognize the week of February twentieth, 2017, as School Board Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas, the Stafford County School Board joins the Virginia School Board Association, recognizing the many and varied contributions of school board clerks; and whereas, Mrs. Roberta Euring, a United States Marine Corps veteran, is the finest clerk in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the school board refers to her as Super Clerk due to her devotion to the students of Stafford County and her excellent organizational skills and expertise that keeps the school board members and the superintendent on track. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this fourteenth day, February 2017, that Stafford County School Board recognizes the week of February twentieth, 2017, as School Board Appreciation Week.
There you go. She really does make us look good.
And most of those "whereas" is about extra time, keeping folks on track. It's all written about her.
Yes.
She sets the standard for all clerks in the Commonwealth. Thank you, Roberta.
Yes.
In fact, she actually wrote that, didn't she?
No. Actually, she didn't. But, that's one of the things you have to slip by her. So, moving on, we will be moving on to citizen comments. I will go over the procedures for citizen comments. What I will ask is, I have a list of people who have signed in. I will read out about five names. If you hear your name called, come on up, line up so you can be ready to speak, you know, right away. Then I'll call out another five names. And if you have not signed up to speak, you are still invited to speak. Just sort of move your way up towards the front so you can line up behind the next speaker. So, I will just go over basic things. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes will be allotted to speakers. You will see up there, there is the stoplight method. Green, you will get started. When you see a yellow light, you have one minute remaining. When red goes, your time has expired. I give you about five seconds to sort of wrap it up and then we'll move on to the next person. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. Also, with regard to public comment, it is just a comment time. There will not be a response from board members. It's not a dialogue. It is an opportunity for us as a board to listen. So, I will call out the first five names of people who have lined up. If you, like I said, if you would just go ahead and line up, that would be great. Rahab Abdeen, Matthew Sutton, Keith Sykes, Brett Downs, and Joan Tracy. Come on forward.
Good evening. My name is Rahab Abdeen. I have lived in Autumn Ridge for almost three years now, and I wanted to talk about the redistricting that's happening regarding Colonial Forge. My husband works in Fredericksburg, and one of the major reasons we decided to live in Stafford was for its schools, specifically Colonial Forge High School. And now we are being told that our children may potentially no longer be going to that school. This frustrates me. The continuous development of new communities in the county despite the fact that the schools can't handle it and using Colonial Forge High School as a selling point in these new communities at the expense of already established communities being redistricted. As people have invested in the area and in the education of our children, we feel that we are being cheated. I understand that the issue of overcrowding must be addressed, but I feel that we, as a community, are being rushed into making a Band-Aid decision for a problem that has been going on for many years now. I have a few modest suggestions for the board. First of all, I would like to suggest stop zoning new growing communities to Colonial Forge instead of using it as a selling point. Consider moving communities further south, for example, Stafford Lakes, which has 415 rising students to Colonial Forge, and England Run North, which has 203 students. It makes no sense to me for them to be bussed all the way up to Colonial Forge, whereas I live seven minutes away and I'm being considered for redistricting. Consider moving students furthest north to North Stafford High School, opening up spaces at Brookpoint High School. And seriously consider building a new high school in the area in the near future since according to the numbers that we were given in 2024, the whole county will be over capacity. And lastly, I think that this would be a non-issue for most of the citizens of the community if all schools were at the same level. And I think that you should seriously suggest investing in North Stafford High School to relieve some of the stress that the parents are feeling. And thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Sutton, Garrisonville District, Embry Mill neighborhood. I know it's not a Q and A, but I'm going to throw it out there in case he'll answer. Mr. Connolly, were you, I know you were appointed. Are you running for the open seat that's going to be in Garrisonville this year? You don't have to answer. Nope, I can answer. Okay. I hope we here find out one way about it. So, the reason I'm here about the redistricting as well, and one of my concerns is long-term, it's not just the high school situation, it's also the elementary. Winding Creek is drowning. I looked at the feeder schools when Winding Creek goes on the block for redistricting next year, which also affects Austin, Autumn Ridge, Embry Mill, and all of us. Stafford's at the seams, Connolly's at it, or was it Anthony Burns, everywhere it might possibly go are all busting at the seams. So, if we force the high school, the new high school to be built ahead of the new elementary school that we already have land for in Embry Mill that the developers gave, then we're going to be having the same exact argument and fight about who's going to go where for the elementary level. So, I'd like to think instead of a short-term Band-Aid solution, we act, you guys actually look at the long-term balancing effects so that the high school that's planned out really to be seven years, seven, 10 years out can actually stay at that schedule, whatever it is, and get the elementary school done. And I concur with what she said of, I noticed that it doesn't seem to be, while we were told in previous recent meetings that all options are on the table and we're looking at all options, I'm not hearing anything coming out of the Stafford Lakes, which I think is the Hartwood District, as being on the chopping block. And personally, politics, I think, plays a factor in everything. And I don't know, it seems interesting that the Garrisonville District doesn't have an elected rep because the person left, they were appointed. They may or may not be running. Other school board members are all up for election, and it seems like only the Garrisonville District is the one that's getting all the rug and a row in the Austin Ridge and the Autumn Ridge and all of that. And you all can make a decision, whatever it is, and we can be angry and make comments about it and blah, 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 but we can be ignored. And by the time we can vote in November about it, the decision's already been made. And then in three or four years, whenever you put the new high school in, you're going to redistrict it again, and you're just going to ship us all right back to Colonial Forge, and we're right back to square one. Whereas, Mountain View, which is blatantly under capacity, North Stafford's virtually at capacity, I mean, I think maybe a little bit under, but it's right there at it. Stafford's at capacity, Brookpoint's drowning, and Forge is drowning, but Mountain View is under. Why are we even talking about moving Austin Ridge, Autumn Ridge, or Embry Mill, or Garrisonville people up to north, which is just then going to be the new drowning school, and leaving Mountain View so under capacity? Stempel's one of the best principals in this county. He knows how to deal with new students that are coming in. He knows how to deal with a diverse population. He's been doing it for years. He's been around. So, please, start looking at Hartwood District. Start putting some of your own neighborhoods that are in your voting block on the block as well and look at it as a community thing so that we're not right back here again. Look at Stafford Lakes. Look at England Run. And one last thing real quick, there was some miscommunication that went out last night about a staircase at Stafford High School. There is no staircase issue at Stafford High School. I know I got to go, but I want that out there that there's no issue with the staircase at Stafford High School. They're at capacity and clarified.
Thank you. Next, I have Keith, okay, thank you.
Keith Sykes, Autumn Ridge Housing Development. I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed redistricting. Moved here about two years ago and I work on Garrisonville Road. I did not buy a house in Warrenton, Fredericksburg, Triangle, or Woodbridge. I specifically bought here in Stafford for the schools. I purchased in Autumn Ridge for three reasons: Winding Creek, HH Pool, and Colonial Forge. Moreover, I paid a premium for my house based on the districts to which I was assigned, and I continue to pay taxes based on increased home values associated with the schooling district. This proposed redistricting will negatively impact the future of my children's education and at the same time will depreciate the value of my home. I'm a taxpayer and I have invested in the future of these schools through my tax contributions, and I've invested in my children's future through the purchase of a particular home. I understand the issue of overcrowding and busing, but this is not an issue which I created nor which my children created. It was not me who failed to appropriately plan for the future. This was, is, and remains a failure of elected officials, and those members are the members of the Board of Education and the Board of Supervisors. Now that we have arrived at this moment of crisis, these same individuals are recommending a solution which is not in the best interest of those who have invested in the community, such as myself, yet others who have not yet paid into this community, such as those who will purchase homes in Embry Mill over the next year, will be provided a benefit which has been stripped from me and my children. With the authorization of Embry Mill housing projects and many other projects throughout this country, these same officials should have recognized the approaching conflict. It was their duty to foresee what was to all others very obvious and to plan accordingly, yet it was not done. Now affected residents and their children are being asked to bear the brunt of the board's ineptitude, and that is not right. Were it the case that the redistricting involved a move to comparable schools, we wouldn't be here having a complaint. Those of us who live in the affected districts under this proposal live far closer to Colonial Forge than many who are being bussed to that school at this time. But, one more example of how bad this redistricting plan is. The plan is a stopgap measure, not a solution, and more turmoil and more moves and more redistricting are sure to follow. Moreover, pushing students from good quality schools to lesser performing schools is not fair to the taxpayer nor to the kids. I would recommend that redistricting, if it is absolute, that children in the southern portion of the Colonial Forge District be moved to Mountain View, a school of equivalent educational potential. Furthermore, the Board of Education and the Board of Supervisors need to get their act together and start planning for the future instead of waiting for these crises to arrive. To all of you in attendance here tonight, I urge you to take note of the names of the people responsible for the fiasco at hand and ensure that your votes reflect your dissatisfaction with the performance of duty of this board. Unfortunately, a number of the individuals before you here today did not perform the due diligence in execution of their appointed duties, and that is why we are here today, and it's shameful, and it's a real travesty for the kids who are going to have to move. Last thing, now they're proposing that we are left holding the bag for your failure to plan. That's what you get paid for, and you didn't do it.
Good evening. I'm Joan Tracy, 25, Wild Plum Court, Autumn Ridge. Long ago and far away, teacher, certified, six through 14. Okay? I understand schools. I understand students. Had two kids myself, boys, God help me. If you, it's well-known. You want your children educated, you have to be part of the education paradigm. You also have to support your school. Now, you're going to redistrict. When we moved here, we were in North Stafford. Then we were in Colonial Forge. Now, you're going to put us back in North Stafford again. Students who are not going to North Stafford now but have an older sibling who will be going to Colonial Forge because they're already there. So, you're going to have one child here and one child here. Oh, joy. It's going to create stress and a negative impact on the families. It's also going to create stress and a negative impact on the schools because how do you support a school and a school system that has ridden right over your child? I learned something at a meeting last night that totally disgusted me. If a class isn't available at one school, children are bussed to another school. So, that means if you calculate it all together, some children are not getting the number of educational hours they're supposed to. Are they? Add it up. If the schools are not equal, if one of them's a tech school, then allow children to go to that school who want to go to a tech school, but make the other rest of them equal in what they provide so that all children have the opportunity to get an education, a good education, and to make something of their futures. Think about it.
Thank you. Brett, before you start, can I just read off the next couple of names just so people can line up if you don't mind? Todd Brown, Pamela Bouchard, Leah Brodnowitz, and Joseph Blockowitz. Sorry if I really butcher your name. Sorry, thank you for the indulgence.
Yep, my name is Brett Downs. I like several in here. I just moved to Stafford five years ago, and I moved specifically to Autumn Ridge because of the school zone and the school district, and we bought there three years ago. We bought there because of Winding Creek Elementary School and also because of Colonial Forge High School. I find it very dissatisfying that I've now purchased a home, I've been paying taxes into the county, and now all of a sudden because, for whatever reason, we decide to take a block of 24 kids and move us to North Stafford, when there's blocks of other kids that can actually make a difference to the actual zoning and the school capacity at Colonial Forge. You know, my wife and I, we place a great value on education. We both have master's degrees. I'm about to start my doctorate degree. We want the best education from our kids. We realize that we do things that other families don't as far as working with them to make sure that they excel, but we want them to have the best educational experience. And that means it's not just us as the parents. That means it's the school system as well. And, you know, when you turn around and you look at the numbers and you see how grossly underpopulated or Mountain View High School is, it's even more angering. I mean, you guys have a responsibility to us as taxpayers. Not, you know, you have a responsibility not for your own personal gain or personal benefit, but you have a responsibility to do the best thing for the county and for our school district. And if we have to, we'll drive our kids to Mountain View High School rather than go to North Stafford. That's how dissatisfied we are with the ratings and the reviews and the things that we read about that high school. No offense to any teachers or people who are there, I'm not trying to offend anyone, just saying my own personal opinion, and I'm very, very, I feel like we're being misrepresented, and I feel like we're being cheated out of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Todd Brown. I live at 12 Fireberry Boulevard in Autumn Ridge. I've been there for about 16 years. So, I went through this in, I think, 2000 to stay in Colonial Forge. And so, my main, I have several points. The first point is you absolutely should delay this redistricting, in my view, and I've studied it quite a bit and I've been to several of the meetings. It's been hastily put together. At the earliest you're aware, in July of 16, you started discussing it in November of 16, and the county and its citizens don't have any concrete proposal whatsoever on the table to consider. We have a bunch of input and ideas, and I understand what you're trying to do by getting our input, but we have nothing to seriously talk about. There isn't a plan yet. And we're supposed to support some kind of vote you're going to make on March 14th. I think that's ludicrous in terms of this speed. We need to look at this plan, and I've made this, you know, in the context of the five high schools that we did build and the current state, not the five high schools plus a sixth high school. It's a logical progression for the five high schools that may be in place for five years or 10 years because $120 million is an awful lot of impact on the whole county plan. So, let me say something about the neighborhoods north of 630, Berkshire, Amiclay, Autumn Ridge, Austin Ridge. That corridor is central. Ridge, Austin Ridge, that corridor is Central Stafford County, and it belongs there. And it belongs in Colonial Forge High School, because that's a Central Stafford County high school. The problem that we have in growth, in my opinion, is in the south of the county primarily, and in how we've made this district that goes the length of the county, and we don't spread it in the west. We have some schools right across the street from North Stafford that are going to Mountain View, and this, so that's why we need to look at it comprehensively, not just picking off neighborhoods and moving them around. So I would say that Stafford High School, Brookpoint High School have capacity, and there's opportunity for us to look holistically at this, and that is the reason why another year to study the issue, to get community input, to have, you know, much more data than we currently have, it would be much wiser. And I do think that having the election finished and seeing how the county progresses over the next year is an important consideration for all of the citizens, and, you know, we get the citizens to have a full picture of what we're doing. So, you know, I certainly feel like, you know, I would like to stay in Colonial Forge. I do think, as I've looked at the issue, there needs to be investment in North Stafford, so I would raise, and I would second what my neighbor said, I'm concerned about elementary, middle, that may have to be delayed for a new high school, and I'm also concerned about the balance of investment in North Stafford. We're making some investment, but not nearly enough compared to what we just put in those other two high schools. The other thing that I would say is that prior to, there doesn't seem to be a concrete plan of how you're going to inform the county and its citizens on what you're going to vote on March 14th. Are you going to give us a plan March 1st when we have our last chance to public comment? Or are you going to put it out next week? So we're supposed to vote March 14th. What I would request as a citizen is your courses of action in a timely manner so that I can study those before you vote. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pamela Bouchard. I'm at 19 Burning Bush Court in Autumn Ridge. My husband and I have been residents in Stafford County for 20 years, and we've been in the Autumn Ridge community since 1998. And so we were involved in the homeowners in 2001 or so when they tried to rezone us, and the neighborhood petition, and spoke with both the school board and the Board of Supervisors, and we were told that, you know, we would be staying at Colonial Forge, and now 15 years later, we're doing this all over again. I feel that this entire process is very rushed, and it's a short-term Band-Aid for a larger problem, and I really feel that the Garrisonville District should be off the table for rezoning. Not questioning Mr. Conley's qualifications or his intentions, but the constituents in the Garrisonville District did not vote for their representative on this school board, and it appears since Mr. Conley has been a member of this school board, this whole process is now a big fast track, and I don't think that it's fair to the taxpayers and the voters in the Garrisonville District for you to even consider moving any of the students out of Colonial Forge. From what the Board of Supervisors have said, Embry Mill and other neighborhoods near Colonial Forge have been on the books for over 15 years, so it's very evident that the school board has made a poor decision in the past by replacing Stafford High instead of adding a sixth school, especially in an area where the growth is almost equivalent to the area of Colonial Forge. And there's got to be a better option than busing kids an hour and five minutes from Stafford Lakes to Colonial Forge, and then moving kids that are only a mile and a half from Colonial Forge to North Stafford. We all know that, I mean, the numbers don't lie. Due to poor planning, you know, long-term residents are being forced to change schools, and North Stafford and Colonial Forge are not equal schools, and, you know, a new library is going to be great, but it's not going to make North Stafford a better school. So, thank you.
My name is Leah Blockowitz, and I'm from the Falmouth area and a Stafford County bus driver. I'm here because of a proposed pay ban.
Can you just get a little closer?
If I focus on you, it's a nice friendly face. Starting pay this year is $13.69. Next year will be $14.82 for all new or drivers that don't make that already. That's an increase of $1.13 hourly. Then there's a possibility they can move to the second pay ban the following year, which is only their second or third starting year, and receive another $1.29 hourly. That is a possible increase of $2.42 hourly for a two- to three-year driver. I don't believe a 10-year driver has received that much of a raise over the course of their employment. I have completed 12 years, and I don't make the second pay ban. You want to apply enhancements to appeal to the market for new hires, but not the future they face as a career employee. Your starting point seems to be appealing to job seekers, but we'd like more consideration about the morals and atmosphere in the workplace. You're not dealing with it on a daily basis, you don't realize it affects not just our drivers and monitors, but also our leads, our parents, our children, our support, and most important, our families. I have heard several times employees wanting to quit. They're done. They don't get paid enough for what they endure. Not just new employees, your eight-to-15-year employees are getting hit once again, I believe, the hardest. We have not received step increases, and now we will be pennies on the dollar to same pay almost as new employees. I've had a few teachers thank me and told me to stand up for my transportation family, that they've lost several good experienced teachers, so with that, normally had you had to fill empty positions but replace more positions with less experience. Your experienced teachers, drivers, monitors, are the ones most parents in the community trust more with their children. Your experienced employees are not getting the compensation they deserve. It is more like another slap in the face, because we have supported our county and didn't give up, because we were told you would take care of your drivers and monitors, not just a certain few first. We too have struggled with the cost of living over the years and stuck it out loyalty. A two-year driver does not have the same experience. Every day is a new challenge. For example, a six-kid fight and a knife, a high school student driving into your bus that you watched grow up, et cetera. Our years in service has taught us how to face and handle situations, but you don't learn that after one year, and I couldn't even imagine what our sub-drivers go through. Training doesn't end after one year, and your experienced employees do take part in supporting training of the new drivers, but I feel that may not be the case anymore. Had we fallen to same pay scale? You divided up the pay bands for the teachers a little more, so why can you add another one for us, say at 10 years? That would then give us a reason to stay even longer. There's only so many training and leave positions open to advance to the third pay ban. I just wanted to let you know that drivers and monitors didn't show due to the fact that they feel it wouldn't make a difference, and it's a waste of time. Where's the appeal to that? Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And to any of the other speakers, if you have written comments and you would like to submit them or hand them to our clerk, they can be distributed, so I apologize, I thought of that while she was reading, in case anybody wants to. You don't have to, but it is an option, so I just wanted to make that available. Next, Joseph, I believe. I'm going to call out the last three names. On here I have Carl Benoit, Robin Hawkins, oh gosh, Lulie Steeman, and if anybody else would like to speak as well, if you would like to go ahead and stand to the side so you can come forward. So, sorry, thank you.
No problem. Good evening. My name is Joe Blockowitz. I'm in the Falmouth area. I am a technician at Fleet Services. I'm going to speak on the pay ban proposal that's coming in. I feel that the superintendent and the board are not fully aware of what the tenured employees' concerns are with this proposal. Now, I'm going to be using the words proposal, tenure, and experience quite a bit. This proposal seems to be an attractant to try to bring and keep little-to-no experience personnel, and making tenured personnel feel as if they don't matter, especially employees who have been there in 2008 at the time of the economic fallout. If this proposal goes through, it will put a damper on the morale, it will eliminate the tenured employees' willingness to do any extra than what is outlined in their contract. Or even worse, it will make experienced personnel want to go elsewhere where they feel that they do matter, and they will be compensated for their experience. Putting lesser experienced employees at the same pay rate of your experienced employees is setting the system up for future failure. In the past, tenured employees have heard, "We'll get your step increases to where they need to be, just give us another year." And we waited, we hung in there, and we're still waiting. And now what has it become of those step increases that so many of us have gone years without? This proposal is taking those steps and putting them in the place for new hires, personnel with lesser experience, and less time served. I used to sell insurance prior to being a technician, and one of the company's biggest goals was retention, retention of the long-term customers and their experienced employees, for one of the biggest risks is to invest into the unknown, and this proposal is an unknown investment. You might find out by doing this proposal, you might not retain experienced drivers, and still not keep drivers in past the one-year mark, and where would that leave the system? I am a sports guy, so how I like to put it real simple is, in no way will a team be successful if you have nothing but rookies. You need your veterans, for they are the ones who get you to the big game. These tenured drivers, as well as myself, like our jobs, we like our county, but we are growing tiresome and feeling forgotten. Last quote I'm going to end up saying, I've heard a lot of my mentors in my life say, "An employer can make a person do anything, but they cannot make them care." I hope the board superintendent can come up with a way to show that their tenured employees are not forgotten. Thanks for letting me speak, listening.
Good evening. My name is Carl Benoit. I have resided with my wife and family in the Autumn Ridge neighborhood for the past 14 years. For the last 10 years, I have children, have had children at Colonial Forge High School. I walk through the halls of that school, and I see their photos and their names on trophies, and I have an emotional attachment to that school, and I have another child that would like to go there as well. And I'm not asking the board to redistrict another neighborhood or another development. What I'm asking the board, on behalf of myself and my neighbors in Autumn Ridge, is not to redistrict our community. That's what I'm here for. And I want to bring to the board's attention a few things. I attended the meeting at Colonial Forge, and sat there and looked at the problem and looked at the numbers, and the one thing I walked away with was I was struck by the concept that the school board was making a complicated problem and trying to solve it with easy solutions. They asked us to look at two schools, remove children from Colonial Forge, place them into two schools that were under capacity, only using neighborhoods and APUs. That's a simple solution to a complicated problem. Everyone here is saying to all of you, you are tearing children from the schools that their brothers and their sisters have gone to. We have invested in these schools through time and effort in volunteering. We have an emotional attachment. We have seen the benefits of what Colonial Forge High School does for us. I'm not saying what North Stafford would do for us, I'm here to tell you what Colonial Forge has done for us. It has seen two of my children out, it has seen two of my girls in college, it has seen one of my daughters in med school, and I have another one graduating this year and another one that's coming up. Now, it's interesting to me, I'm not asking the board to delay a decision because of the delay would cause my daughter to be in the school, because she's too far behind for that. I say that the delay is needed to make this decision right, because it doesn't feel fair to any of us. It's not a simple problem. It cannot be answered and resolved with APUs and whole districts being moved. It is a whole-county problem, and it has to be reviewed from a whole-county perspective. And that's what I ask the board. And lastly, I would just ask this. If the plan is to move children to North Stafford, I would ask the board what steps have been taken to accommodate these children in North Stafford. I've seen what they've done at Forge, we've all seen it. They've added space for more students, but I don't know if I've seen that at North Stafford. There's no draw, there's no benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Perfect timing. I have Robin, oh, okay, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Robin Hawkins. It's my daughter Peyton. We're in the Autumn Ridge community. I just want to give you a perspective from a parent's point of view. Right now, I'm a concerned parent of a Colonial Forge student and a rising Colonial Forge student. My daughter's a junior who should be grandfathered in, if the way I'm reading everything correctly, and stay at Forge, but my concern is for my son, who is a rising freshman. My daughter would be his transportation to and from school, school events, school activities. He's already started taking part in the Colonial Forge baseball program, which we don't want to lose. We've already purchased and invested in Colonial Forge between Spirit Gear, Spirit Ware, Booster Club, Athletic Passes, you name it, we've already invested everything we have so far into Colonial Forge, planning for their future, which is, if we have to split schools, would be an added expense obviously to our family, but the worst part, being a mom, is having my children attend two different schools. My husband and I would have to attend two different open houses, two different parent teacher conference nights, work on two different athletic schedules, we'll be supporting two different schools. Like I said, I can't buy a family athletic pass for one and not buy a family athletic pass for another. It's not fair to split my funds among two schools. It would, no offense, but mealtime would really be awful, because we'd be, you know, bickering back and forth between which is the better school. It would be really hard on a family. I would have to decide which activity to go to. Am I going to pick this child? Am I going to pick this child? So instead of picking a school, I would be picking a child, and that's awful for a family, my husband and I to pick, which child are you going to pick and support today? That's an awful feeling that I don't want to have to face. My daughter and son have been looking forward to attending high school together, making memories, sharing these experiences. If Autumn Ridge does get rezoned, I would beg and plead everything I have in me as a mom to consider some sort of waiver for siblings. If not, you're tearing families apart. It's a sad situation. Families are supposed to support schools and their children, but how can I support, like I said, two booster programs, two fundraisers, two conferences? I don't want to have to choose. I feel strongly that this decision's being rushed without maybe looking at all the options. There needs to be a different approach given, maybe take some more time. Instead of a short-term Band-Aid fix, I know it's a county problem, I'm not saying everyone's going to be happy with the decision, because you can't make everyone happy, but maybe look at all the people that are being transferred into Forge that are in different areas. Look at all the athletes, look at all the transfers, just because it's Colonial Forge. You remove them, you might have your number. I mean, I'm just saying, let's take a look at every possibility. We love being in Autumn Ridge community. We've been promised forever that we would never get redistrict, and obviously we are again, but my biggest plea is to, please, 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 do whatever you can to consider some sort of sibling waiver, so families can keep their children together, because that's just a really hard thing that's going to come up for our families. Give us time to plan. So I'm just saying, take a minute and step in my shoes and, you know, consider yourself that. Thank you so much for the time, I appreciate it.
My name is Brian Steeman, and I'm a 16-year resident of the Autumn Ridge neighborhood within the Garrisonville District. I'll be quite frank, I'm here to state my displeasure with the potential redistricting of our neighborhood away from Colonial Forge High School. The subject of Colonial Forge redistricting has once again reared its ugly head. Our neighborhood faced this same issue more than a decade ago. I ask myself, why? Moreover, I ask myself, why is this a sudden crisis for the school board with an immediate need to answer the question for the school year 2017 and 18? This subject's not new, has been an ongoing discussion, but only in the last few months has the subject garnered renewed and focused attention. In my view, the leadership of the school board and the Board of Supervisors has essentially failed the citizens of the county to effectively manage the growth of the county with respect to school capacity. Hence, I am here today discussing the issue. This is a time for the school board to lead, not with a stopgap fixed to the problem, but to lead and evaluate the issue with a countywide bias and a long-term plan to solve the bigger picture. The current exercise appears to simply address Colonial Forge for the short term and will provide for immediate measures that could negatively impact longstanding residents of Autumn Ridge who have always planned for their children to attend Colonial Forge. The stopgap does not truly solve the issue. It is clear that there has been considerable growth in the south and southeast portions of the county as well as the central region. The south and southeast growth has clearly impacted Forge attendance, as highlighted by our supervisor Ms. Sellers. It seems evident that a view of Colonial Forge without a more holistic evaluation falls short of the board's due diligence with regard to the matter of high school populations. The information being presented at the various working sessions also appears to drive the teams to arrive at a specific conclusion that Autumn Ridge should be redistricted. While we have been told from the board that there's been no decision made regarding the matter, it certainly does appear that the data is slanted to drive specific outcomes, with a bias towards targeting Autumn Ridge. Now, all potentially impacted neighborhoods are in a defensive posture to protect themselves from sending their children to north. You have now pitted neighborhoods and friends against each other. What message does this send to our children? What message does this send to our children? Certainly not one of citizenship and goodwill towards others. It's no secret that people buy homes so their kids can attend Colonial Forge. In fact, we did that very thing sixteen years ago. Forge is the golden nugget high school, and other Stafford high schools are much less desirable to many, whether you want to admit it or not. All things considered, Stafford County schools, including the high schools, are not equal. This is certainly evident by rankings, test scores, and overall academic achievement. I challenge the board to do the right thing with no personal bias. It is clear that certain board members have a far more personal interest in the outcome of the decision, as their neighborhood and children would be directly impacted. I simply, I desire to have both of my children attend Colonial Forge, as this has been our path for the past seventeen years. I request the board to spare Autumn Ridge in this exercise. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks. Anyone else who wishes to speak, just come on forward and line up, that would be great. And just if you would, after you say your name and address, there's a clipboard right to your, well, okay, it's to my, behind you, if you'll just sign in after you have your comments. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Curvin. I'm actually, I actually live at Embry Mill, the place that's been a little bit demonized, it feels like, throughout this process. So I'm not big on coming to these types of things, you probably, since this is before novices, but, and I don't have anything prepared, but I just thought it was important that you hear our voice. We've had, we were at the meeting yesterday, the Garrisonville District, and one of the things we discussed is, I guess, the very first meeting, for instance, at Colonial Forge, it was a rude awakening to have your neighbors really say that you don't belong, and that you don't belong to something that you've purchased, you know, you did your research and you purchased a home and thought you were going to be happy with it. We helped to build a road that's not going to be released yet, but still, build a road and soccer fields and all these things that people enjoy, yet we don't deserve to be able to be, have an education at Colonial Forge, which is exactly what we were planning in the first place, when we paid what we paid. I mean, if you want to be honest, Embry Mill's a beautiful community, but at the same point, you have less yard space, you have less house space, you have less of a lot of things, you make those compromises to be able to be in a place where you feel safe, and also where you can provide a good education for your kids. Unfortunately, the situation's worked itself out, where it feels like we're pitting neighbors against each other. Instead of all Garrisonville District, which I've heard some, and I appreciate, there's been others that have, we've had to be pitted against each other, because we're afraid that we're going to get our dreams stolen away. And I think it's unfair. To be honest, it seems like we should be left alone. There's other schools, obviously, in the further south. Stafford Lakes, England Run, and such, that could go to Mountain View, which I think is a great school. Matter of fact, if Mountain View was an issue for us, then that'd be more accommodating. It's North Stafford, that's the issue, unfortunately. And I don't mean to denigrate that school, but the issue is, we need, we purchased here, and we purchased for the reason of being able to go to Colonial Forge. And here's the last part for us. Since we're a new community and we're growing, the problem is, it feels like we don't have a voice yet. Obviously, our HOA's not developed, and so it almost gives the folks there, I'm just letting you know, the feel of almost like a bait-and-switch. Come here, Colonial Forge, we have all these things, and now access to ballfields, yes, you're paying a little bit more, but you're going to help provide this for the county. Oh, wait, never mind, now you're going to HH Pool. Oh, wait, never mind, now you're going to go to North Stafford, and the next thing will be Winding Creek. It feels like we've been baited in, and now everything's going to be, the rug's going to be pulled. And that's the general feeling amongst the folks at Embry Mill. I mean, we have a new representative, I imagine you're doing the best you can under circumstance, but at the same point, you successfully helped Austin Ridge navigate the redistricting with the middle school. We don't have anyone like that. And so, we just want equal treatment for the Garrisonville District overall. If we could just, we did redistricting alone for us, and be able to revisit this at another time, and maybe look at the southern schools, that'd be great. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Rice. We live at Five Silverthorn Court in Autumn Ridge, and I'm here about the redistricting, too. I am a new resident, I've only been here since the school started in August. My husband and I relocated here after twenty-seven years to retire. We have three children, we had late in life, and they are now entering High School. I went and spent a lot of time looking for a home. My husband is now out of the service, but he's working at Quantico, and he will be there for, hopefully, a long time. However, I spent more time looking for this home than I have in our entire military career. I did it specifically by the school. I know you have factors that you look at, that you are, that you are looking at in redistricting, and your reasons, that you possibly are looking at the area of Autumn Ridge. I am new in this, so I'm hearing some of the things that have been going on over the years. But my number-one thing was the school. If you look online, and you know nothing about this part of the country, you will see that Colonial Forge is the magnet that brings you to this area. I could have moved to Woodbridge, I could have gone to Manassas, I could have gone south to Fredericksburg, which seems to be a growing area. I could have gotten more for the price I paid for my house. However, I specifically stayed in the Colonial Forge area. I had a short window to look for a home, I couldn't buy new housing, because it wasn't going to be ready until mid-October, early November. So what I'm upset about is that my real estate agent specifically called the county school on speaker, when I was about to sign a contract for a bid on a house, and they specifically stated that there was no future redistricting for Colonial Forge in the future, for that area. And that's only a few months ago. And then I go to the Colonial Forge information night at the school, and our facilitator, who seemed to already have an idea that Autumn Ridge was already on the cutting board, I, we were all very upset at the table, because she was very, very, she was giving very good signs that that's exactly what was happening. But the transportation facilitator, who came over to explain to me the busing of why children come from an hour away from the south, and on some bad days, it can take them up until afternoon to get to school, he explained to me that this is always going to have been something they were going to look at, redistricting, that they did the middle, elementary three years ago, they did the middle schools last year, and this year, they're doing high schools. If I had known that, it would have made a huge difference in the purchasing of a home that is not just for short term. I know this is a transient area, people will be moving around here for a few hours, I mean, a few years, but I am here to stay, and this is why I'm here, for Colonial Forge. I'm sorry. I am part of the PTA, I would be very strong in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Hayes. My name is Andy Hayes, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Benson. I'd like to speak about a different issue, but I do want to say to all the parents that have voiced strong opinions, that as a teacher in the county, we feel the children's pain every day, when they come to our classrooms, and there's problems, and there's issues that are going on, and if, and when there's redistricting, they come to us with the problems, they voice what they want and what they wish for, and we all hope that they get what they want, and so do you. We all want good schools. If, if, they would, we want them to know that the teachers have watched this, and the educators of this county, and we've worried about the same thing. If you go into the schools, the teachers, and the administration, and everyone at Central Office, all wonder, it's the same thing. Where are they going to put all these students? And we've gone through classroom increases in size, and you've worked hard and diligently at that, but we do feel their pain, and it is difficult decisions. I am going to, I am the Vice President of the Stafford Education Association, and I would like to mention how you're currently looking at next year's calendar and reviewing it. The association represents bus drivers, and paras, and cafeteria workers, but in this case, we're mostly interested in the teachers and the school year for next year. We understand that there's a possibility that the workdays will be more designated towards professional days, where your, the teachers will be in classrooms and being taught. I want to mention that many teachers feel strongly that our workdays need to be in our classroom. And much of what we're talking about is exactly what many of the parents are mentioning, the schools are crowded, the work is awesome, it is growing, the teachers need time to plan. Probably the most important thing that we can do, other than make connections with students, is to plan properly. And that includes grading, includes preparing, it includes being mentally ready for the next day. When we're going to professional learning all day, it's almost like the same thing that we do every day, which is teach, and then face the end of the hours, which are times when we need some time to reflect back, and the planning sometimes is the missing piece of a good lesson the next day, or the next week, or the next semester. Thankfully, this year, we did get a workday, and I appreciate my school only having a small time for professional development, because I got to work in my classroom, clean my desk, and prepare for lessons for the second semester. So we ask, please, consider using the workdays for teacher classroom. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am from Stafford County Transportation. I am actually one of the drivers you're trying to give the raise to, with this pay-band business. I know you guys aren't answering questions, but bear with me. Why give me the raise? To make new drivers come in? I had a twelve-year veteran bring me in. Do you think you're going to get that type of dedication if I'm getting paid a dollar less than her? She's been here for twelve years. I didn't really come here prepared to speak, but I'm simply here as a driver, because it's convenient for me right now. I have three young kids, daycare is outrageous, and it wasn't the pay that brought me in, it was the convenience. And I actually like doing this job, but I have not committed to it as a career. But your people who have been here, your drivers who have been here for a decade, have already decided that. If you're going to give a raise, at the very least, give it across the board. You say you're going to, I remember at that meeting we had to come to, you said, "Well, we'll get to you guys eventually." It's been how many years for them? When is it going to come? And why are we getting paid first? Why are we getting the raise first? I understand that the value of a dollar has gone up for years and years and years, but why it has taken you guys that long to realize that? I don't understand. And why it's just now happening, that, oh, maybe we should go ahead and boost the pay, because, you know, they're being underpaid? It doesn't make sense to me. So, good luck trying to fill the spots, when all of your experienced drivers leave, for counties who will pay way more. At least, starting rate is sixteen-something. So, it's not a demand, simple request, at least take it into account, that these drivers are the ones who taught me, still teaching me, still supporting me. You're not going to get that kind of support with your new drivers, if you treat your old ones like this. So, that's it.
Make sure you sign in, so we can reach you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Come on forward.
Oh, my name's Paul Tracy. I live at Twenty-Five Wild Plum Court, Stafford, Virginia. You heard earlier from my wife. Redistricting people is nothing new. My wife and I were brought up in Davenport, Iowa. I started out at Davenport High School. The next year, I was at Central High, and we had West High. It was split, but it was split in a proper manner. The kids that lived on the east side went to Central. The kids that lived on the west side of town went to West High. They've got more schools now, and they're doing it the same way. Kids should be redistricted to the school that's closest to them. And every school should have the same curriculum, starting with the three Rs, of course. After that, if you want to go to something else, you want an AP school, you want a special school for that, that's fine. But other than that, every school should be exactly the same. We've lived here for nineteen years, enjoy Stafford, but we are getting older now, and we're thinking about downsizing. A house in our area just sold for four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, ours is right around that figure. What's it going to be worth if you redistrict and send Autumn Ridge's kids to North Stafford? Regardless of whether it's the same or not, the perception is it's not, and the perception is what counts. If you can prove to the county, and to everybody in the area, that all of your schools have the same level of education, then you've got something to talk about. If you can't, then you need to leave Autumn Ridge alone, and redistrict to kids that belong to that school. I understand you've got some closer there that are being bused someplace else. That's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. Kids need to be close to their school, and they don't need to be bused halfway across town during the middle of school. They need those hours in the classroom. I've got a bachelor's degree and a master's degree, my wife's got the same. We received a good education back then, there's no reason why they can't receive a good education now. Absolutely none. As a matter of fact, they should receive better education. Thank you.
Mr. Tracy, can you sign in, if you would like?
Am I allowed to speak a second time, even if it's not about redistricting?
Not this evening. Thank you, thanks for, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Carol Menowar. I actually wasn't planning to speak tonight either, but I feel like we've sort of danced around a lot of the issues that were being talked about with redistricting. And it really needs to be said, that this is an ongoing problem, some people have mentioned that. I've been in the district since 1996, when I started teaching at Stafford High School. I've taught, I've left, I've stayed home, I've come back, and I've left again, and now I'm a parent, and I have three children in Stafford County schools. You really are advantaging some schools over others, based on redistricting, and it's continued to happen over and over and over again. And if better decisions had been made by past boards, you wouldn't be in the situation you're in now. That doesn't make anybody feel better, but it does give you the opportunity to fix the problem, and to make decisions based on an entire county, and not one neighborhood over the other. And I know that that's not necessarily very popular with the people who want their neighborhood to go to a specific school, and I understand they made decisions based on things that they thought were, in fact, the case. But it is time, beyond time, to look at the demographics of Stafford County as a whole, and to not benefit one set or group or neighborhood over the other, and one school over the other, and to make sure that every kid in Stafford County, regardless of their zip code or their location, has access to the phenomenal educational opportunities that are provided here in Stafford County. As a parent, as a former educator here, all of our schools are great, and this notion that we can't fix the problem with redistricting and overcrowding by looking at geography, and thinking about bus routes, and making sure that resources are placed in all of our schools, so they're all great, and it's not a competition between one side and ninety-five or the other, it's beyond time to make those decisions. And I just pray that this time, you get it right, and you do that, or we're not back in two years, having the exact same conversations with the exact same parents, coming up here and saying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget to sign in. That was good, try and remember. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board at this time? Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board at this time?
I live in Embry Mill, and I'm not going to...the horse has been beat till it's dead here on the floor. So, I've been to all the meetings, and I've heard the same two themes in every meeting. Everyone feels the decision is rushed. So, the citizenry is clearly angry, and they're clearly going to be angry if a decision is made that feels rushed. There'll always be angry people. Anyone who gets subject to redistricting is going to be angry, and I think everybody knows that. But I think the common theme from every single person that has spoken has said, "This decision's rushed." I think it would be smart to delay and then offer some plans that people could give some opinions about, which isn't the case now. A gentleman earlier said, "We still don't have any real plans or anything to really discuss because everything is on the table," which means nothing is on the table. And the second theme that I've heard in every meeting is geography matters. People are going to notice if decisions are made that are not commonsensical. Common sense should play a role, and when people have to ride an hour on a bus, it defies common sense. So, I know the board has a difficult decision to make. There aren't going to be a lot of unhappy people, but please use common sense and please take into account geography. It matters. Everyone says it matters, and when you look at the map, and there's people from the furthest point in the county going to one of the northernmost schools, it doesn't make any sense to anyone, unless, of course, you live in that neighborhood. And we can't make decisions simply based on, "Well, I live in this neighborhood, and please protect my neighborhood," even though it makes no sense to anyone else. Those decisions are going to be transparent, and if the citizenry appears to be mad now, they'll even be angrier if it's a decision's made that doesn't make any sense. So, thank you.
Okay, I'll ask again. Anyone else wishing to address the board, come forward. Okay, I don't see anybody jumping up, so if not, then I will close public comment this evening, and then we will be moving on to our board committee reports. Ms. Egan, do you want to start us?
Why not?
Well, I can go down, but I know you had one.
Okay, so, let's see. When did we meet? It feels like it was so long ago. Monday?
Monday.
Yeah, it was just Monday.
No.
Just past Monday, yeah. Week ago, yesterday, yeah. The three-on-three, or the Joint Working Schools Group, which is comprised of three members of this board and three members of the Board of Supervisors, met as a follow-on meeting to our first official meeting of the year, which was called primarily to address things like a joint CIP and the shared services, finishing up those conversations that we started quite some time ago. We were introduced to Mr. Tom Foley, who is the new county administrator. We spoke at length about the joint CIP, and we're looking forward to getting a report back from Dr. Benson and Administrator Foley about how this may pan out going forward. I think what we're looking at now is a group of folks from the county side, a group of folks from our side getting together and kind of prioritizing scoring, if you will, of school projects, county projects, and going through that type of scoring process so that we're not bickering over whose projects are more important any longer. So, we're hopeful that that's going to grow some wings, and we're going to be able to go somewhere with that. We're going to, hopefully, at the next meeting, I think, what did we say it was?
March 20th.
March, thank you.
March 20th.
Superclerk. March 20th is the next meeting, and we will be looking at flow charts and what a structure might look like, the reporting structure and things like that, coming back to the Joint Schools Committee at that point. Shared services, we're still...we're going to try to treat it the same way that we're going to look at the joint CIP. Same format, same way, that, you know, not so much the scoring part, but, you know, flow charts that are going to show us, reporting structures, and what things we want to make a priority as we start talking about cost savings on things that we can all share together between the schools and the county itself. So, that's pretty much where we are with that. Do we want to go through the committee reports, or do we want to roll into...
Let's do committee reports first.
Okay, and I shall conclude mine then.
Ms. Healy, anything to add? Mr. Hyrman?
I have a report on, I guess, kind of finances, budget, and chair, vice chair meeting. We had a meeting, the chair and I did, with the chair and vice chair of the Board of Supervisors this morning, and in that meeting, we did agree to have a joint board-to-board work session on the budget, and we have tentatively scheduled for March 15th. So, if you could put that on your schedule, March 15th.
So, the Ides of March?
Ides of March.
That's what Chairman of the Board of Supervisors requested.
That's exactly what he said.
And he has...I exchanged a text message with him. He has confirmed with all but one of his members that day is good for them, so they're planning to move forward. We will plan a 7:00 PM meeting with a 6:30 dinner, and it'll be over at the County Administration Building in the ABC conference room. And then the finance and budget, we have a meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM.
Six.
6:00 PM, right back here. That's all I have.
Mr. Conley?
I have...
Ms. Decatur? Mr. McCusker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, I'd like to talk about the Gifted Advisory Committee. The DI Appraiser Training is complete. It was at Rock Hill. Thank you, Rock Hill Elementary School, for hosting that. The CGS applications were due today, so let's hope everyone got their Commonwealth Governor School applications in for the next school year. I hear whispers that we have a lot of applications, and that's a good thing. William &amp; Mary Middle School Model United Nations takes place in February 24th to 26th. This is when a lot of the kids from middle school go down there for the weekend, and it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. I know my children both went, and it's a great opportunity to take part in United Nations chatting and debating, and it's a wonderful opportunity. So, let's hope that our gifted teachers and our other teachers are getting the kids in there. The summer residential governor school nominations are also taking place, and so go on the website for the Commonwealth Governor School, and you'll find out where all these summer nominations and packets that you have to put together. But there are some really wonderful opportunities, and free of cost, free of cost. Wonderful opportunities in the summertime for the kids to go away to a fully funded summer school. DI Northern Virginia Regional Competition will take place March 4th at North Stafford High School, and Stafford has approximately 30 teams. The destination imagination is something that Stafford does very, very well at, and usually has one or two teams that go to nationals. So, another wonderful opportunity for our kids. The STAT, the Stafford Academy for Technology, took a field trip to George Mason on Wednesday, and they had a great time. And that's all I see here written up, so I didn't have any friends there that went, so I hope they had a great time. That's it for my Gifted Advisory Report.
I have no report. Most of the items that have been covered, so I will move on to board member comments. Ms. Egan, you want to start us off on that, and we'll just move back down.
Okay. I believe it was last week. I'm losing track of my days. The Acquahia Harbor parents invited me and my fellow board member, Jamie Decatur, and Supervisors Cavalier and Milde, to come in and talk a little bit about the potential impacts of this redistricting on Brookpoint High School. So, we were...Jamie unfortunately wasn't able to be there because she was doing a good-wife thing, and it was her husband's birthday. But I was there with Jack and with Paul, and we answered a ton of questions. They were great questions. We're going to be meeting again at some point, depending on how this meeting goes, on Thursday, and I just wanted to let all my constituents know that there will be...let everybody know. This room here will be the venue for the work session where folks will be sitting. While we're streaming, I'm assuming on these two and the two screens here, the board members and staff will be in the executive session room behind us here, where we have our work sessions, so you can watch and listen. We'll be mic'd up, and they will be broadcasting on the internet too, I believe. Is that correct, on the website?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So, that will be this Thursday, and I believe that was at 5:30. Am I getting my times right? Second point I want to touch on is a couple of points that were brought up tonight by parents about things that their Realtor had said, things that their builders had said, things that the sales staff over at Embry Mill had said. And this is a little disturbing to me, because I used to be in new home sales, and if they were selling you things that were not true, I would call your Realtor, or I would call the builder, and express your frustration with them as well. I would never have said something that I couldn't confirm was true or not true. So, that's not on us. You need to take that up with your Realtors and your builders, number one. And number two, Mr. Conley, I'm sorry, but I need to say this. This has been brought up, I've been seeing it on Facebook, all day, and I have a major problem with it. There are cities and counties in this Commonwealth that still have appointed representatives for their school board. Because someone on this board is appointed does not take away their legitimacy, ever. He was appointed by the rest of the members on this board, not because of who he is, or where he lives, or what he knows, or anything else like that. He and three other people came on and interviewed with us. They were all fantastic candidates, but we chose him based on his interview and his vision for this school division. Nothing more, not because he had a political agenda or any other reason. We chose him because he was the best candidate, and it was a unanimous vote. So, I will also point out, Ms. Hazard was also an appointed member at one point. Ms. Kidby, who Mr. Conley replaced, was also an appointed member. And Mr. Ty Schreiber, who left this board to go over to the Board of Supervisors, was appointed over there and was able to vote on setting a tax rate. So, everybody who's appointed is legitimate. Please don't come up here again and say he's not legitimate, because that will make me angry again. So, thank you. On to the next member.
Ms. Healy, I will move on next to you.
I just want to give a personal thanks to the counselors in our school. I know from my daughter's experience, the elementary school counselor, the middle school counselor, and the high school counselors were a very important part of her education in Stafford County public schools. And now that she's out of college, she still talks about some of them and, you know, wants to go back and see her counselors and talk with them. So, we're very blessed to have the dedicated counselors that we do have and who are very caring about every student, you know, in our school. So, I wish the counselors a happy Counselors' Week, Month, whatever. They work so hard all year to try to make this the best place and the best education for all our students. And not just the educational part. I think they deal with them on a very personal level, and I don't know how they do it with, you know, all the hundreds of students that they're dealing with, but they do make that connection. So, thank you. Also, wanted to give a thanks to Dr. Greider, Mr. Archbold, who opened up Rodney Thompson last night for a Rock Hill town meeting. They stayed the whole time, so it was a very, very long day for them, and I am very grateful that we have such generous people in the school district particularly, but in the Rock Hill district, you know, very specially. And also, thanks to Dr. Benson, Mr. Haran, and Mrs. Hazard for coming. And Mrs. Hazard took notes, as I did, in Mr. Conley's town meeting. And when we have our work session, we will be sharing those notes of what we heard from the community, because I think it is really important that, you know, all the community comments, you know, be shared. We are all here this evening, and we could hear those of you who spoke, and I thank you for speaking and sharing your thoughts, your recommendations, your concerns with us. We also receive emails, and they are shared with every member of this board, and, you know, what was, you know, passed along at the community meetings will as well. So, this is a very, very sensitive, very emotional issue. I was here back in 2001 when we did have that last redistricting. They don't get any easier. So, I recall very vividly the discussions that went on at that time, as well as one in between 2001 and now, when we built Mountain View High School and did a fairly, you know, massive redistricting, so we could, you know, fill up that school at least with the first three years of students. So, if you have any more comments you'd like to share, please share them with us. You have our addresses. You certainly can call, but a written record is much easier to share, you know, among the entire board, and I would encourage you to do that. And I'm looking forward to the Ides of March meeting. What a day to pick. I was a classics minor in college. Thank you.
Mr. Hyrman, do you want to go ahead?
This morning, I had the opportunity to visit with students at Stafford High School, but the students that I visited with weren't just from Stafford High School. They were actually from all of our schools. They were part of the CGS program, Commonwealth Governor School, and they were doing a poetry reading. It was poems that they wrote themselves, a culmination of a poetry lesson that where they go through to learn all the different aspects and types of poetry, and they had to draft and write their own poem and deliver it on a microphone at a podium. I was really incredibly impressed with these children, these students, these young men and women, I should say. Really extremely mature, incredible work that they did. I had the opportunity last week to spend the majority of the week with some of the most brilliant engineers, software engineers, software developers, business leaders in the software industry, to include the CEO of Microsoft, the CEO of Dell, the CEO of the National Bank of South Africa. And I felt these children, these kids, outperformed all the folks I was with last week. They were absolutely incredible. So, Duane, the CGS program is doing a great job, and it's really serving all the students across this county. So, they're doing a good job. I do want to steal some thunder, talk about a couple of constituents that are not mine. Congratulations to the Mountain View High School girls' basketball team, who Ms. Hazard just received text messages have won conferences.
They've never won before.
And I'm certain Charlotte Hazard was a contributor. Very good job. Another constituent of the George Washington District.
Yes.
Someone Mr. McCusker is familiar with, his son, Sean. Congratulations on his recognition for his scholarly ability. It was selected as a Presidential Scholar, is that what it's called? Has the opportunity to compete for a White House Fellowship-type of scholarship. Pretty impressive stuff that's being produced throughout the county. Couple things I want to mention. I'm holding a town hall myself on February 23rd at Falmouth Elementary School. The purpose of the town hall is really discuss the other redistricting that we have going on that's not getting as much news, and that's a small redistricting proposal that's going to affect Falmouth Elementary School, Ferry Farm Elementary School, and Margaret Brett Elementary School. It's primarily to move a couple, potentially move a couple neighborhoods off of Plantation Drive from schools that are a little bit further away to the school that's closer, Falmouth Elementary. But I want to make sure I gave the opportunity for the folks in Falmouth, in that whole Falmouth area, an opportunity to really understand what the plan is and what the proposal is. I'm planning to stick to the topic of the elementary school, but if anyone else shows up and want to discuss other topics, we will continue as long as we can utilize the school and continue that town hall meeting. Last thing, I just want to say hi to a couple friends out there in the audience. Alyssa, Kail, here for Boy Scouts?
Yeah.
Very good, welcome. Sit through this and don't get up to speak. Welcome.
Mr. Conley?
Thank you. I just wanted to say to the folks from the Garrisonville District that got up...
I just wanted to say to the folks from the Garrisonville District that got up here to speak, to, one, thank you for, thank you for coming, and thank you for coming up here. You know, I got involved in this board as a dad and a resident of Stafford for 13 years because the decisions that are made up here are very important and they affect all of our lives. I understand that. I understand that it's frustrating at times. So when you come up here and we just kind of stare at you without a comment, I want you to know that at least we hear you. I hear you. Embry Mill, Autumn Ridge, folks, I, I hear you. I do live in Austin Ridge. I also hear Austin Ridge. I understand. So I just want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for coming out last Thursday, three and a half hours of standing. And I'm talking about y'all in line as well as me. I understand it was passionate, and I understand why you're there. And everyone's coming forward, not because folks like conflict. I know people are coming up because they care. So I just want to say that and say thank you.
Ms. Decatur?
Hi. Happy Valentine's Day, guys. You could have been anywhere, but you're here with us. So, no, but I, I do want to thank you guys for coming. I want to thank you for being a, a part of your, your communities that are taking, taking an interest in being involved. And I want you to let, want to let you know that, that we hear you, and as board members, we're not specifically interested in solely the district that we represent. We're up here as a board, and we're making decisions as a board for the greater good of, of the entire county, and I want you to know that. So, you know, we're all listening. We hear you. We thank you for being here and giving us your time as we work through this, you know, clearly very difficult decision that, you know, that we have to make. So I appreciate you guys, and I thank you for your comment, and that's all.
Mr. McCosker?
Well, okay. Well, thank you very much. Boy, everyone had such great comments, especially Mr. Harans. So counselors, you know, congratulations. You know, the counselors have been working their tail off. And for those of you, I have four students, I have a 12th grader, 11th grader, and then I've got a five-year Iraq break, a couple, a couple of nasty places I had to go to, and then I had two more young boys that are fourth and, fourth and fifth grade, right? So the counselors are such hard-working folks in the school, from, you know, taking care of all the kids, you know, at least the middle school and the high school counselors take care of kids coming in, in the summertime, and they, they enroll folks. But we, you know, and I'm going to speak for Stafford High School counselors, you know, my son, as he's applying to colleges, and this, this goes for all five of our high schools, the kids are applying for colleges, and the college gives them a nasty little note, something like, hey, we haven't received your counselor's paragraph on how great a kid you are, you know, basically. And so we had to, Sean had to scramble, and he sent his counselor, but, well, she just finished an operation. She was in the hospital, in the hospital bed. But she was, we got a picture of her typing up, you know, the, not just Sean's, but everybody's still doing her work from the hospital bed to make sure that these things got in on time. So anyway, counselors are a, are a blessing, and what a hard-working crew they are. School board appreciation, I'd say a lot of good things, but I really don't like any of these people up here. So, I mean, I'm not going to say that. So, happy school board. Drivers pay banding. So we had a little discussion about drivers' pay banding earlier today. I think Dr. Benson kind of caught the, caught the glitch that the new drivers and the senior drivers were getting close to. So I think there's a fix in, in the way for that coming. Super teacher Andrew Hayes, thanks for coming up. The workdays has always been an issue. It's been the elementary school, you know, days, and then you got the high school and the middle school, and so we're going to have to figure that out, and I'm going to get smart, Andrew, and let us know what you think, you know, officially what you think your, your position is on that, and look at the calendar. Commonwealth Governor's School, it's doing well. I hear little whispers, I hear little bees are going around, a little buzzing about, you know, there's some courses of action maybe on the table to, to close the Colonial Forge site. I hope that's not the truth, but, because, you know, it is a wonderful program for our gifted and talented folks, and I know Dr. Benson supports it. It's just, I would hope we kept, we would keep all three sites and build upon the sites that we have. I mean, these are the kids that are going to cure cancer and go to, and go to Mars, and that's how it is. We spend a lot of money on special education, and I think this is a special education line item. I mean, these, these kids are our top 5% IQs off the chart, and, you know, we really need to take care of them, and, and I know we will. But I would like to see us build the program as opposed to take it out of Colonial Forge High School and then put it up to North Stafford and possibly lose those kids from maybe Brookpoint, Mountain View, and Colonial Forge saying, hey, I don't want to travel. You know, there's a lot of success stories, and I'm prepared to talk about that once this thing comes up with a PowerPoint briefing about how successful this program really is. Can we do better? Well, heck, yes, we can do better. We can do a lot better with the program, and that's what I was hoping the program review would kind of dig into, not just us, but IB. You know, what are we spending our money on, and what's the bang for the buck? But I can tell you with some, some certainty that, you know, when the Commonwealth Governor's School kids graduate, their, their safe colleges, UVA and William &amp; Mary, and that ain't too bad.
All right. Well, I will just do a, I won't speak long, but I would like to say, I know it is School Board Appreciation Month, and I sort of chuckled when I saw that we, you know, certainly got it during the middle of budget redistricting, all the tough decisions that we have to make. But I have to say, as I have said before, serving with these people who we spend a lot of time with, and we are spending a lot of our winter together, I am very glad that you all have chosen to give the time that you all give to be up here. It's not hard, it's a hard job, it's glamorous, but we all decided we would do it, and I, and I am very happy that you all sit up here with me, week after week, and go through these things. Even when we disagree and even when we do that, I know we are looking out for our kids. We sometimes don't have all the resources we need. We may not be able to do all the things that we do, but the one thing that I really enjoy about so far with this board and with our addition of Dr. Benson is we have a plan, and we are moving forward. The only way you can move forward is to have a plan, and that we have a, our strategic plan, you have something that you're implementing, because that is something we have needed, is a vision and where we're moving. And I am very pleased to, again, serve with you all in that way. Speaking of other standout students, and are actually now for us a former student, yes, Mr. Harans, first, I'll start with that. Yes, Mountain View High School did beat Mass Aponix 49-39 in, for our, for our girls, for our girls, and they will go on to regionals, but they have never won conference, so it was very wonderful. So congratulations to Coach Sergeant, Ben Sergeant, who is at Garrisonville, but in his spot, his extra time, he likes to spend it with hormonal teenage girls, and I think he deserves a trophy anyway. But I would also like to, if, if you don't know, I would really like to congratulate Emily Weesban and her family. She is a former Hartwood resident and a Mountain View High School IB graduate on winning her first Grammy Award for the song "Thy Will," performed by Hillary Scott and the Scott Family. Emily wrote this, co-wrote this beautiful song, and looking at the other songs she's written, I can't remember the new movie that's out, the, it's about trucks, I don't know. Taking a little guy. No, it's the little trucks. It's like, it's one of those, it's like a Disney one. She also wrote one of the songs in there. So I really think this will be one of the first ti, this is not the last time I will say it, but I am sure this is one of first of many accolades for her. But it was amazing to watch them receive it. I got the little clip, and it was really wonderful. Them, the Weesban family is a wonderful Hartwood resident, and I just feel like that's such a great thing for us to say, that she came from Stafford County Public Schools. So on that happy note, I will turn it off to Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, I just, I want to start out just, and I will be brief, but we have, we have great schools across the board. We have great teaching and learning across the board, and I see it every week. I am out in schools pretty much every week and not walking through the hallways waving at people. I am, I am embedded in classrooms, doing as much as I can to engage with young people and our teachers, and we've got a lot to be really proud of. It appears as though we have a perception issue that we need to, to work on, and I think we've got plenty of information we can put out there that will help with that perception. But I just, just want to emphasize that we've got great, absolutely great schools and great teaching and learning occurring across the board. Last week I was at Colonial Forge in a theater class, musical theater, not exactly my thing. You know, they got me doing some high kicks that were not so high.
I saw the pictures.
Yes, exactly.
We saw the pictures.
But then I also got to spend some time in ecology class, which is a little bit more comfortable for me, given my science background, with a second-year teacher who's doing a phenomenal, just a phenomenal job. Tomorrow I'm going to be in an honors physics class at North Stafford. We're going to be working on circuitry. So I'm, I'm excited for our future, and I just, I, we've got great teaching and learning going on across the board. We have a perception issue that we need to work on, and we're going to. Thank you.
Moving on to consent items, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or removals from consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our single action item regarding the proposed changes to the 2017-18 school instructional calendar. Is that going to be Mr. Nichols?
Madam Chair, school board members. School Board Clerk passed out a updated revised back-of-the-school calendar for you to preview. I apologize, there was a mistake on a date under the right-hand column of report card dates. You can see highlighted there, June 15th. On the one that was in the online, it said June 23rd, which would have been, be a week after school got out, so I don't know what I was thinking when I put that in there, so. I made that correction on the X-Y year-long calendar, and also at the bottom, the grades K through eight. But that was supplied with you with the calendar from the last time.
If I could ask a question, this is probably not yours, is when we post this on the website, if we will have both the back and the front of the calendar? If that would be...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they're currently.
Making sure.
Yes.
Are there any questions? Yep.
While Mr. Nichols is, is with us, I'd like him to give the board some information. I talked with him today because I had asked a question that arose from a, a comment from an SCA rep at the last time about professional day versus work day, and if you could explain, Mr. Nichols, how it actually works.
Yes, I did some research after the last meeting, and I went back to the Calendar Committee, and the, the only Calendar Committee member who I could find who was still currently serving goes back to 2002. And that individual was able to pull out the calendars back from 2002 to present, and back in 2009, 2010 school year, they changed the, at that time it was called for the workdays, it was Teacher Workday slash In-Service Day for all of the dates. And at that time, they changed them to Professional Days. And the reason given was because whether they're working in their classroom on grades or whether working in a, in a PLC or whether working in a meeting, it's a professional day. They're doing professional work. So they changed that back in 2009, and it's been that way for the last seven years. Most schools, as I looked also, I talked with the schools for the Teacher Workday that we had after the semester grades that got shifted with the weather, and majority of the schools, all the teachers were working on grades that day. The schools that were having a meeting were having an hour, an hour and a half, no longer than two-hour meeting that day, because they felt it was more important to meet that day, instead of keeping the teachers after school, and the other days are coming in early before school starts. And it was more of convenience, but they do know that teachers need to do grades and work on grades, especially at the end of the time. And again, in our high schools, you have hybrid classes, they're going from one class starting a brand-new course.
Mr. Nichols? Are there any further questions or comments on this item?
Not, I have a motion.
Okay.
Does that go with you? I move that we approve the, the calendar as proposed with the new back page.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If, if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to our information items. Our first item, Starks saying to approve the fiscal year 2018 budget. Reason that is on there, depending on how our work session and moving forward, and based on some of the timeline that we had talked about with the Board of Supervisors, we felt it important. I'd like to commend the board for coming in on a Saturday morning, and for Mr. Harans calling in from the airport, to talk about the budget and, and our priorities. We made some work tonight regarding compensation and some other areas that we believe may need to be added into the, the budget, and we talked a lot about positions. So just wanted to sort of summarize, I think we've done some great work, and if there are any further work items that are outstanding or something you haven't asked, please make sure you get that to Ms. Euring or to the Fab, which meets tomorrow evening, if there's a particular area of interest.
Do we have one more work session for the budget?
Let me see.
Just, just one more?
We can always schedule more, but we, we're trying to work towards the...
And our, our calendar has us approving it on February 28th. But discussing with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors, they're actually looking at late March before they're approving their budget and advertising the tax rate. So I think that buys us a little bit of time. We may end up having to do special call meeting if we get into too much to approve the budget, but I think we have some time, a little, little bit of time. Part of the delay is the new county administrator coming in, trying to get acclimated and et cetera.
Do we have any, do we have a crystal ball that says when the state's going to have theirs?
That's the other.
Finished?
I'd call that the other problem.
They, they adjourn, they're scheduled to adjourn the end of February, correct?
The 25th.
25th, so February. That's contingent on the budget being passed, of them passing the state budget. Your guess is as good as mine, whether that will happen. It could extend beyond the 25th, they just continue to work, or they could go into recess. The, the committee members, the, the money committee members stay there and try to hash it out, and they come back sometime in March. If I were a betting man, that would be my bet, what's going to happen this year.
When does the, when do the Board of Supervisors have to have theirs done per state code?
April, we just, the end of April? April 1st?
It is April 1st? Okay. Okay, thanks.
So like I said, we're all working with those parameters, but we've started that dialogue with the board that we're all knowing, since so much of our funding comes that way, we need to track that budget on that side. Our next item is an item regarding our VPS, a sale of bonds in the amount of 11 million, around, a little over $11 million for the spring pool. I'm sure this will be Mr. Fulmer. Are there any particular questions in the attachment? As you can see, the, the project names that would be, that are being funded, any concerns or questions? Any questions? All right. I'm hearing no questions regarding this item.
Madam Chair? Can we move this to action if there's no opposition to it?
Due to the funding, I mean, the timing dates, that would be the request.
So, can I make the motion?
Yes, you may.
Motion to move 10.02 to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. For the board to move 10.02 to action, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have a follow-on motion?
I do. Madam Chair, I move to approve 10.02.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The application will move forward. The application will move forward. Another information item, 10.03, regarding the superintendent's proposed policy on transfers. I believe this is Mrs. Cale.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Benson. Tonight, we do have just some changes added to our current student transfer policy. The most relevant is certainly the part where we have added about a request for a student transfer to a school that is not closed. That part has been added, may be approved for the reasons set forth below, and we've defined a closed school. A closed school is a school at 90% or more of its design capacity. At the end of that section, we've added information as requested regarding closed school transfers. What we've indicated is requests to transfer to a closed school will only be approved for the following reasons: extreme hardship case, which of course would be case-by-case basis, or children of part-time or full-time school division employees who reside in Stafford County or employed at the closed school or at their nearest work location to the closed school. And of course, the student needs to reside with the school division employee. We do have teachers, certified employees, that live outside of Stafford County, that was given a long time ago, that is a non-resident, as a way to retain our employees, but that is covered under the non-resident residence policy. So that's not a transfer because they are not in a school to be transferred. In addition, childcare and the school which a sibling attends are not sufficient justifications for approval of a transfer to a closed school. So that has been added. Currently, today, we have 10 closed schools.
Are there any questions?
I have a question. It's not directly related to what Mrs. Cale just put out here, but this, I know this question has come up before, and since we're talking about redistricting, I want to bring this up. If we redistrict Colonial Forge and we get it below 90%, it's no longer a closed school. I don't want to have to move kids out and then have people put in for transfers from, you know, Brookpoint High School. Oh, I want to go to join something that Colonial Forge has that Brookpoint doesn't. And after moving all those kids out and then moving someone else in who just decided they wanted to transfer in, if I were a parent over there, I'd be ticked off. So can we look at something that when there's a hardship like this with a capacity issue at a school, and we're deliberately trying to relieve that school, that if it falls below 90% and we know that all this growth is coming, that we find some kind of, some other bar to put in there that prevents it from being open, that prevents people from just transferring into a school that we just cleared out to accommodate future growth?
Can we do something along the lines, I'm sorry?
Go right ahead.
Along the lines of if a school is closed and it is open due to redistricting, it will not be open for four years or five years, something out there?
Could we just reserve the right to close a school at our discretion? Is that...
I think we have to make it a policy, don't we? It has to be written in policy.
If a school is closed, can it only, can it not be reopened?
Okay. If a school is closed at 90%, it doesn't automatically reopen when we get it below 90% for redistricting purposes.
It does now.
Well, it shouldn't, is what I'm saying. It shouldn't automatically reopen.
That's why I brought this up.
So you deem when it reopens.
That's why I put something out there of, I just threw four years because that's the, you know, life of a high schooler. Five years, 10 years, whatever we collect for the year, I'm good with. That it won't reopen after being, going through a redistricting process due to overcrowding, due to being closed, will not be reopened, will not be considered an open school for X number of years.
Madam Chairman, I think what we could do is to include that in the definition of a closed school, because this says a closed school is a school at 90% or more of its design capacity, and we could add in there some verbiage along the lines of "or otherwise designated as closed by the school board." So then that would take a positive action of the board to close it, and I would believe that once a school is designated as closed by the school board, it would take a positive action by the board to open it once again, which would be very different from the 90%. And there may be various reasons why we would determine to close a school. Redistricting would be one, but it could be, you know, other uses of the school, or, you know, we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and I would, you know, assume that these would be, you know, looked at very carefully and that, you know, there would be some criteria that the board would establish, but it would be on a case-by-case basis.
Could we also suggest, if we can't work something out with siblings, that that may be something to consider as well?
Well, that could be part of the redistricting decision. When we come up with a redistricting plan, then we can address any criteria that the board, you know, wishes to address in there, and that would override. They wouldn't really be applying to go to a closed school because they would be allowed to do so as a result of that, you know, decision.
In that vein, I was wondering whether we would want to wait to bring this specific policy back until we were going through the redistricting, so we make sure that this policy does not conflict with any decision that we might make about siblings, or do you think we should, you know, I'm just trying to see if it's part of the thing.
I think any sibling decision that's made with respect to the redistricting would be completely independent of a closed school. That's part of a redistricting decision. And the only concern I would have about delaying this policy is that this applies to elementary and middle and the other high schools as well.
That's right.
And there are a lot of families that need to do their planning, that need to set their schedules, that need to know, you know, where their children are going to go to school next year. Elementary, for example, you know, childcare is a reason, and, you know, people need to make those arrangements. So I would see the redistricting decisions that are made can address any issues that we want to with respect to future students, you know, at Colonial Forge, you know, school. Did you say you're having a tail hall, Mr. McOscar?
Oh, yes, that's a great idea, Dwayne.
Well, come down to Ferry Farms.
I don't understand you when you all mumble.
Right. I just was trying to make sure that when we look at number two under closed school transfers, we do not create more confusion. That's why, the only reason I was considering whether we should do it as part of the redistricting. I open to the will of the board, I just want, when you read that about talking about the siblings, I just didn't want our policies to conflict. So I think we can handle it.
But they're not, they're not applying to be in a closed school if we permit them to come to that school. I mean, this is part where someone submits an application to whomever, it's reviewed, it ultimately, you know, comes up to Mrs. Cale if it's appealed or whatever. But a case like that, that would be like a stamp approval.
Right. But it has to be 90%. Okay, I mean, I just am...
But I did have one question about this, and I know there's a lot of questions about the number of employees' children at Forge. Do you have those numbers? Because, I mean, I've heard a lot, a little, whatever, and that would just be the current numbers today.
I have those right in front of me.
Well, I mean, we can get them later on, but the question that I have, and this really is a, it's a question, I don't have a suggestion on it, but we do have this exception, which we put in really as a benefit for our employees, certainly to bring their children to the school they work at. I mean, that's a, you know, no-brainer. And then the one, the next one is the nearest work location to the closed school. And I, my understanding was that was to make it easier for the staff to drop their kids off or pick them up or, you know, to go to the school during the day if necessary. But I think when we, when we're talking about these closed schools, it's something to think about. If the, if the employee is providing transportation, that's one thing, because, you know, the student isn't, doesn't have any other way to go, and you'd need it to be the nearest school. But if the student is providing their own transportation, I'm not sure there's the same need, you know, to open up a closed school. And I'm trying to be equitable, and I, there's a balance. I don't know the answer, but I think it's something we need to think about. And if we know the numbers, maybe that would, that would...
Currently, and of course, the seniors would be gone, currently at Forge, we have 18 students there that are employees, either of Forge or a closed workplace.
Any further questions, or if upon, you know, reviewing this policy, there are additional questions? We all know Mrs. Cale's email, so...
This is not related, but Mrs. Cale, this is what you gave us.
Thank you.
Our whole team...
Thank you.
The Instructional Services Team, and actually, Mrs. Egan pointed out, her name is on there.
Yes.
That's really cool. Did you all see your names on there? Unless you have my name on yours, then...
We all have yours.
I didn't know. It's like, wow, but thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's from the whole team.
Well, thank you, team.
Yes, thank you. So just one more quick question. So are we going to look at including this in this policy, or are we going to hold off until the...
Well, it...
I didn't get a clear yes or no on...
I don't know that we can afford to wait, can we? For the elementary and the middles.
Well, we could, if we needed to, hold it for a little while for them to, we could move our date. Now it's open March 1. We could move our date if we needed to for a little while. Currently, all closed schools have been, daycare is no longer considered period for a closed school. So that's not a change. The change would be the sibling.
Right. Do we want to wait?
We can certainly put it on for our meeting for the 28th, and we can, it can be on for action, and if the board decides to defer, we may can, but, I mean, as of right now, my thought would be to put it on for action, but if there's a will...
Maybe we could put a footnote here that this does not apply to decisions made by the school board with respect for redistricting that address any of these particular issues. So that would put everybody at ease, that, you know, even though we have this policy, that if a decision's made with respect to redistricting, that's going to trump, override whatever this.
Really? Because the other...
I didn't mean to say that, I'm so sorry. This is not a political arena, okay?
Well, and because, as Mrs. Cale did point out, this also applies to our elementary and our middle schools as well, so...
Right.
We may, of course, though, change that window, even if it's by two weeks, so we can deal with that there. I want our board members to think about that. We also want to make sure it's a message we can communicate easily to the community and not create...
And I think the community will appreciate the fact that we're not saying, hey, guys, I'm sorry, we're going to have to move you, but we're going to bring in all these other applicants who want to do the transfer.
Correct.
Because if I were one of the Colonial Forge parents, I would, I'd be up here, pounding my fist on, right there.
I agree.
So I just, I just think it's, I just think we need to have it.
I do.
Yeah.
I do, too. I just, it was just some suggestions of where we want to go, so...
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cale.
So we will move on to our staff reports. We will move for, I think it's Mrs. Boutright and Ms. Aber, and Dr. Aberg, or Dr. Aberg is coming forward about climate, our climate survey. Oh, does, does everybody need a break, or no? I couldn't tell. Okay, okay, I was thinking we were rolling on, but then I got the little eyeball, so I wasn't sure.
I was just giving you the...
It was not Dr. Aberg.
I'm going to go home.
It was not Dr. Aberg, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Benson. It is my pleasure to offer a summary of our three years of implementing the climate World at Work identifies the six elements of a total rewards package that collectively defining an organization's strategy to attract, motivate, retain, and engage employees. Work-life effectiveness is one of the most important workplace attributes, second only to compensation, according to research conducted by the Corporate Executive Board. Employees who feel they have a better work-life balance tend to work 21% harder than those that don't. The Journal of Organizational and Educational Leadership presents research that correlates positive teacher morale, leading to increased student engagement, which then leads to increased student achievement. Over time, we would hope to see increased retention rates as a result of our climate survey work. We have administered the survey over the past three years. Our first year in 2014-15 was baseline data. We worked with the Stafford Education Association and the Climate Advisory Committee to create the survey. We administered again during the 15-16 school year, and we had minimal wordsmithing done between the two iterations so that we would be able to compare the second year with the first year. This third year, we did, again, very minimal wordsmithing. We added additional open-ended responses. During the course of these three years, schools have included climate work in committees as part of their school improvement process, and if you look at the questions that have remained consistent over the three years of administration, we have overall improvement on all of those questions as a division. Three areas where we've seen great improvement are, I feel, trust exists at the school department, the leadership in my school or department takes time to praise those performing well, and I enjoy working here. These are the combined strongly-agree-agree responses. During the first administration of the survey, the first question regarding trust was one of the questions that had the highest combined total of disagree, strongly disagree, and it is an area that has seen some of the greatest improvement over the three years. Our next steps include supporting schools with training and resources. We've surveyed our schools to see which areas of support they would like. We've had requests to include dedicated time to work specifically on the climate, as well as some specific training requests. We've also are looking at a schedule, a different schedule to survey perhaps every other year for those schools that have positively consistent results, certainly keeping parameters in place so that we don't, we're able to maintain the positive momentum at those schools. Thank you.
Our chairman ran away, so I guess I'm left in charge. Scary, I know. Any, Mr. Vice, what should we do? Any questions for Dr. Aberg?
Are we going to do these reviews every couple of years? Are we just going to do it once? How often are we looking at...
As far as bringing the information to you as a board, we brought it the first year, then we've brought it back, we've come every other year.
Okay. So we're going to keep, we're going to keep that process going? Are we going to keep engaging everybody to kind of feel them out and see if things are still going well?
Absolutely. Well, we're continuing to administer the survey annually.
Okay.
And then we've offered the report to you all every other year, to the board every other year. But we do want to look at perhaps modifying the survey administration to every other year at some schools.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, and I think that's important to note, the aggregate data for the division continues to improve, and we have some schools and departments that are consistently scoring very high in the results. And then we have some other areas that we need to continue to focus on, and, you know, we don't want folks to suffer from a kind of survey burnout, and so we're thinking that we're going to begin to adjust that cycle, but we are going to continue to focus in areas where we want to see that improvement. And we also want to make sure that the leadership teams in those departments and schools have the resources that they need to continue to work on improving that workplace climate.
Is, when I look at areas of improvement, are these numbers our low point? I mean, would you say that these are the lowest numbers of our survey?
No. No, those are the areas where...
These are the areas that we just strongly agree, agree.
Where it was the highest increase of agree, strongly agree, over the three-year period.
Over the three, okay.
So, you know, we have some schools that were 100% of respondents said that leadership treats me with respect, and so that's pretty incredible to have everyone that responded to the survey, and we can't say that's everyone in school, but everyone that responded made that statement. And so, you know, we, this is important to us, it's an important part of our retention strategy, and it's something that we are in complete control of, so we're going to continue to focus on it.
Madam Chair, I think it should be acknowledged that three years we've done the survey, and we've seen these improvements year to year. we've seen these improvements year to year, and I don't think that is necessarily a result of just Hammett's Dance. It's because of leadership, and Dr. Benson has been our leader throughout those three years of improvement. I think what he brought to this division is exactly what we asked for when we were looking for a new superintendent. So thank you, Bruce.
I would like to second that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Aberg.
Madam Chair, just to point a privilege, before we go into our closed session and then wrap up for the evening, I just would like to kind of ask the board to, you know, talk a little bit about Dr. Mira. He's, I've seen his, it's time for him to retire, just like Sue Clark, you know, he's, he's getting a little long in the tooth over there, and, no, but Dr. Dave Mira, you know, has worked hard for the school division for years, and the utmost professional. Just because I made fun of him doesn't mean I just like him, okay? And Dave, we just want to make, we just want to let you know that, you know, we want to wish you best of luck on your endeavors, and thanks so much for giving, you know, your time and your effort to the school division. We know you're going to go on to do better things. Maybe you're just going to retire, I don't know. But I'd just like to say, from, at least for me, I'll speak for me, thank you very much for doing what you did, and bringing the Technology Department forward, and always making sure that the kids are, the kids are always talked about first, and the kids are supported in our division with the, whether we, sometimes we didn't like what you had to say, you know, give me more money for computers, but, you know, you always had the kids, kids' heart, you know, the kids' needs at heart, and I'd just like to thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mira.
And we appreciate, Dr. Mira, not only what you've done to help advance the use of technology within the division, but also helping us figure out how to work through a transition here, so we appreciate that, kind of little bit of advanced notice as we begin to plan to figure out how we're going to continue and advance the work in your area of responsibility, so thank you.
All right, at this time, yes. But don't stop working yet.
Just remember, there's no such thing as ex-assistant superintendent for technology.
Yes.
Or more. You will always be called upon.
At this time, we will read into closed session, Mr. Hirons.
Pursuant to Section 2.23711A of the Code of Virginia, I move the Stafford County School Board convene a closed session, meaning to discuss personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.23711A1, and to discuss the investment of public funds pursuant to the public funds exemption at Section 2.23711A6 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session.